Good evening, planning commissioners, county staff and public. I would like to call this planning commission work session to order for Thursday, April the 3rd, 2025. My name is Brian Halbert and I am the vice chair of the Clark County Planning Commission. Before we begin tonight, I would like to announce that our planning commission work sessions are hybrid, both in person and by way of WebEx. For the virtual and in-person members of the planning commission and staff, please ensure that your microphones are turned off or muted unless you are speaking. There will not be any public comment during this work session, but members of the public can watch and listen. And this evening's agenda is planned as follows. We will hear amendment to ordinance 2022-07-01, Chilachi Bluff. And we will then move to the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program with Steve Gallup and Harrison Houston. And with that, is there any comments before we get started?
Planning Commission members, this is Oliver. Before we get started, I just want to quickly mention that the council on April 8th on the separate business will be considering amendment to a resolution that solidified their action or direction following their council meeting on March 5th. You can watch and listen to that if you have time. Before I turn this over to Jose Alvarez, who will be going over the, you know, providing an overview of the item, just want to make a few remarks. This application was filed in 2021. Some of you who were here may remember this particular case. There are, I believe, three planning commission members that I knew, but I just want to give you just a quick background. This was applied for, I'd say, plan amendment during the annual review process in 2021. And what does that mean? It means that we have been with this case for quite some time, and here we are. It did come to the planning commission when, after the, this matter was appealed to the Growth Management Hearings Board following their ruling. We wanted the council or the county to come into compliance because they ruled, that is the Growth Management Hearings Board, that the action that the council or the county took was non-compliant as it relates to GMA and CIPA in particular. This is an application to place a surface mining overlay on 330 acres that was at the time and still planned to be designated as forest. And we reviewed the application and the responsible CIPA official at the time issued a DNS determination of non-significance. And that action was appealed first to the Clark County Council at the time. And I won't go into details what happened, but they did have a hearing on that appeal, but felt that the determination was proper because the determination at the time was that we are, there is a provision that we can face CIPA review. But in any case, the council did allow the overlay, surface mining overlay to proceed and by doing so adopted the ordinance affirming that. And that ordinance is 2022-07-01. So in your packet today and also for the hearing that is coming up on April 17th, your public hearing, you will have the staff report. For tonight, Jose will go over what I'm calling an overview of the matter before you at this work session. We also included the Court of Appeals decisions, which I'm sure you must have read. And we also included the adopted ordinance, the existing adopted ordinance as Exhibit 1. And in that Exhibit 1, you will find under Section 2, Item 5, where this particular issue is addressed in the adopted ordinance. Since we scheduled this work session, we have been receiving public comments, which we have provided to you. All the public comments we have received to date are all provided to the planning commission for your consideration. If new comments come in before your hearing, we will provide that to you. I will also indicate that in addition to providing you the comments that we have received, all those comments, those that will come in from now until your hearing will also be forwarded on to the council when they consider this item for their hearing. So with that, let me, of course, you all know our legal counsel, Ms. Chris Cook, who is here too, to answer any questions that you may have. So with that, let me turn it over to Jose Alvarez, who is our Land Use Program Manager.
Thank you, Oliver. So we're just going to go over the long background on this, as Oliver said. This is a case dating back to 2021. And then the proposed action, the findings and recommendations, and then the process and next steps. Next slide. We make that a little bit bigger. So this is just a aerial view of the property. As Oliver mentioned, there's four parcels totaling about 330 acres. And then the sort of general vicinity location there. Next slide. So the property is located south of Chilachi Prairie, rural center southeast of the intersection of northeast 419th Street and Yale Bridge Road. The zoning is FR80, and as I mentioned, there's four lots and 330 acres. Next slide, please. So again, going back to January of 2026 of 2021 is when the applicant granted construction, submitted an application for placement of a surface mining overlay on their 330 acres. The responsible official issued a CIPA December 1st of that year, issuing a determination of non-significance because there was little information on the specific actual mining. The process to do mining in the county starts with placing a surface mining overlay on the property. Once that's done, then an applicant can actually come in and apply for a mine to do mining. And that's typically a conditional use permit that would be required and that would be done through our community development department. So this is the initial step to put the overlay on the property, just designating that there is rock in this location. And then the review process would begin then. And so typically, there's another, since there's another process, there's another opportunity for a more detailed environmental assessment to be done. And typically, it's done at that time. And that was part of the rationale for issuing the determination of non-significance. So on December, next slide. There we go. Okay, so on December 15th, 2021. No, 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 next slide. It's the next one. That's correct. All right. So the appeal from, sorry, December 1st. So yeah, two weeks after Friends of Clark County appealed the decision of the DNS to our council, council heard a hearing, had a hearing, March 15th, and they affirmed the determination of non-significance. And then on July 19th of 2022, the council adopted, they approved the ordinance 2022-07-01, which added the SMO overlay onto those four parcels. The ordinance was appealed by Friends of Clark County in September of that year. And then in March of 2023, the Growth Management Hearings Board issued a final decision and order where they ruled that the county had improperly made a determination of non-significance with respect to the overlay application. They concluded that the ordinance approving the SMO didn't comply with GMA and was invalid as interfering with the GMA goals because of the CIPA determination. So in, on April 5th, 2023, Clark County, in response to that ruling from the Growth Management Hearings Board, withdrew the determination of non-significance and the responsible official issued a determination of significance. The county and the applicants appealed that growth board decision to Clark County Superior Court, which consolidated the appeals and the matter moved to the Washington State Court of Appeals. On March 10th of this year, the Court of Appeals issued its opinion rejecting the counties and the mining companies' appeal and continued the determinations of non-compliance and So in terms of our process to come into compliance, there's a criteria for making amendments outside of the annual review cycle. And that's in order to comply with court decisions, we're allowed to do that. And clearly, this is a response to a court decision. So the applicability criteria has been met. And then we are proposing to bring this to you, have a hearing in two weeks, and then council will have a hearing in May based on your recommendation. Next slide, Jeff. And then next one. Yep. So staff is recommending approval of the repeal of the, of ordinance.
The only thing I would, this is Oliver, or Jack again, what I will add is that after the council hearing, if they repeal the ordinance, we still have to go back to the growth board. They will have what is known as compliance hearing. Only the growth board can determine that we have come into compliance, and Chris can speak to that if you have questions. We still have to go back to the growth board and they will have to have a compliance hearing. And after that, they will issue whatever decision finding us to be in compliance. That's how this works.
Chris, are you adding to this?
Thanks, Brian. I don't really have anything to add other than to answer any questions that you might have.
I think I'll run down the list and just check with our planning commission members on person by person. So I'll just start with Mark. You're online with us, Mark, and you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, great. All right, Kyle, you're next on the list. Any questions?
I don't have any questions at this time.
And Eldon?
So basically, staff is recommending that the surface mining overlay go away, correct? So when it says repeal?
That, that is, yes, that is the recommendation. What, what they're suggesting is that you repeal the ordinance that established the surface mining overlay. So once that happens, it would be gone.
All right, all right. Understood. And the, and the reason that the, that it first didn't get approved, or the Growth Management Hearing says because the, the county, the CIPA said a determination of non-significance was issued, right? At that point? And they said that's, and because of that, it was struck down, basically. And then the county came back and said, okay, well, there is going to be a significance. And then it's still...
Right. The, the Growth Board, because we had to go in front of them six months or so after they issued their decision in the first place and explain, you know, explain ourselves where we were in the process. And their response to our explanation where we did ask that they rule we were in compliance was, you know, that's all very well and good. You issued a determination of significance. That is what you needed to do. But that determination was not issued before council made its decision on the overlay. So if the DS had been issued earlier, then an environmental impact statement, an EIS, would have been required. And the Growth Board held that that knowledge, that information had to be in front of council when council considered the question of establishing the overlay.
So anytime a determination of significance comes about, then an environmental impact statement is needed.
Uh, I, most of the time, that's, that's what it's about, yeah.
For SMOs, probably.
I'm sorry?
Especially for surface mining overlays.
Apparently...
Or does it apply to everything?
Apparently, I would say, based on the Growth Board's decision and then on the Court of Appeals decision, I would say that it would be a very risky proposition to adopt an SMO without a DS and a full environmental analysis. Now, the question, here we go. I'll, I'll defend this decision again. The, the question is, what are you going to analyze?
Well, that's what I was going to bring up. What are you going to analyze if there's no real information about what they're going to, how they're going to mine? Okay, so then if environmental impact study is made, then to do that study, somebody has to make a lot of assumptions, correct? I would have to.
Some assumptions have to be made, or alternatively, it's not going to be a very detailed EIS. And as Jose said, when the permit is sought to actually mine, that's when the real analysis will occur because that's when we will know what the mine will be like, where things are going to be located, where there's going to be an access road, where there's going to be a crusher, whether there will be a truck road because, you know, there was at some point thought that, well, this is right at the end of the Portland-Vancouver Junction Railroad, we'll just send everything by rail, which is not at all settled, I have to say. So when, when the permit is applied for, or when it would be applied for, there would be all kinds of information, all kinds of process that the applicant would have to go through. They'd need a conditional use permit, they would need a site plan review. So very precise and binding mapping and statements of what's going to happen when, where would be made. We don't have that now. Now, I have to say, it's a mine. The notion that there would be no environmental impact from a mine is a little questionable. And according to the Growth Board, and this was emphasized by the Court of Appeals, and they dug in an oral argument on it, there's, there's going to be an impact. So I think that's what, that's the takeaway we can get from this is don't approve anything related to a mine without a DS.
Yeah, which would require the EIS. And so what you're describing is a process, there could be two EISs in this whole thing.
Yes, I think that is correct.
Right. Which adds money.
It does. And it's, it... One could say that is requiring the applicant to pay the money instead of requiring value to be taken from the area and from the people who are nearby the area, where, whether they reside there or drive on those roads or whatever. That's another way to look at it. But in any event, yes, it would take both money and time.
Okay, thanks.
Go for it, Kyle.
Thank you. So I guess I want to understand typically, maybe before this decision, how was this handled with a, with an overlay? Were they, it, based off of what you're saying, it sounds like traditionally it did not require a, or typically they did get added on with a DNS and no, no EIS.
So surface mining overlays are not frequent. And the last time that a surface mining overlay was added, it was for a small area right by an already operating mine. The last time there was surface mining overlay act, action was, I think in 2012, when the county reviewed its entire surface mining overlay circumstance, looked at the new information that DNR had given us about where rock was located and how likely that rock was to be something that was worth mining. Ultimately, there were, I don't know how many parcels were, got a brand shiny new surface mining overlay added to them, they're all over the county. And did we do an EIS for that? Did we do a DS?
We included, this is Oliver, Jack again, we included that action when we did the 2016 update and did an EIS.
Yeah, that explains it. So there was an EIS then that was not a site-specific occurrence. So it's kind of different.
But so you're saying that there was a determination of significance, but it was a county-wide?
It was, it was a, it was done in connection with the 2016 comprehensive plan review and update.
With the EIS for that entire project.
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes. And then just one more question then. You know, looking forward, it sounds like we, you know, we may have to do an EIS for any sort of overlay like this. If that's the case, who, who's then paying for and providing it? Is that the responsibility of the county? Is that the responsibility of the applicant? Or is that...
If, I believe that that is probably the applicant. I mean, when you apply for something, it is on you to demonstrate that you meet the criteria. So I don't think that that would be something that the county would be providing for the applicant.
Okay. That was, those were the two questions I thought of. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jack?
So I think my concern here is the, I guess the precedent is that, is this only going to apply to mining overlays? Or is this like subdivision overlays or like anything else that is, like what other...
That's a good question. So I think the concern on staff's part and on my part is if the language is read really, really broadly, it could apply to all kinds of non-project applications. This is a non-project action, putting a, you know, putting a color on a map is not a project. It's not development to map something. It's not until they get to the project permit stage that we're talking about an actual project. So as I say, if, if the language, if some of it is read very broadly, that, that might provide exactly the precedent you're talking about. I have to say, that would be kind of inconsistent with some of the less broad language in the Court of Appeals decision and the Growth Board decision, but especially the Court of Appeals decision where they took pains to say, this is a mine, and the applicant acknowledged that there would be environmental impacts from it. So...
No, I just, I mean, I...
No, I think that's, that, I think that is, what was troubling to staff about it is, well, where does that leave us with non-project actions?
Right. Because I mean, it's really from, I mean, the challenge standpoint is, how do you possibly give a project detail when you don't know if it's going to even be approved in that? And so, so, so from a developer standpoint, and this from an environmental, if you're anti-growth, this works really well because you can challenge the first EIS on a conceptual project. And then it could be challenged again on the approval if the project has deviated too much from the first EIS. And then if that doesn't happen, then they can still challenge the next level of the EIS on that. So it's a stacking effect of the, it's a California effect, in fact, in essence, of, of anti-growth. And so that's what, that's what's really troublesome to me about this. I think we're stuck as far as what we have to do, but question is from a, who is the Growth Management Board? They are appointed from the governor or who?
They are appointed by the governor. There are, used to be nine of them in three separate groups, one eastern, one western, and one central Puget Sound. Now there's just seven of them. And three of them, including one from the area where the controversy has occurred, hear each appeal that goes to them. A certain number of them... A certain number of them have to be lawyers and a certain number of them have to have been municipal officials of ones like elected officials. So it's that group and that's who hears it. And they are, of course, authorized. I mean, they were created by state law. And their procedures are set forth in state law and in the WACS.
So if, if this applicant would like to mine there in the future, what is that, is there a whole process of like, we're getting rid of the overlay and then they come back and request an overlay?
They would have to do that.
Do the whole thing again and then see that.
Yeah, the only thing I will say to that is, and you know, you have good question. All these are very good questions and we are wrestling with that. One of the, and Chris also in her response, one of the areas where I would, I wouldn't say we disagree, but I think we have concern is that the growth board and the, at least the growth board is saying that the, the applicant provided a lot of information, a lot of information. Now, does that raise the concern that you, that you're bringing up? In future, will the applicant not provide us any information at all? Okay, so there are just so many rulings or how you look at this ruling that you can form up your own conclusion. I think we don't know the nature of future application, but to answer your question, we issued the, the DS.
A month, well, two weeks after.
Yeah, two weeks after the, after the ruling.
Yeah.
And the applicant appealed that decision, appealed that determination. But as the county, because we were ready to go to a, here, when you appeal, it goes to the hearing examiner. And the applicant asked that we hold going to the hearing examiner until the outcome of this case. Therefore, the DS is still in effect. In my opinion, if, if they do the, when, by the time that the council takes an action on this, I, as the responsible official can say, you still have one year to do the, to do the environmental impact statement rather than coming back and applying again. That I can, you know, I can make the determination at the support official to say, yeah, the DS is still in effect and you have one year. Anytime an EIS is issued, a DS is issued, you have one year to complete that. After that one year, your application becomes non-avoided. So they can, they can go ahead and do the, the environmental impact statement.
Well, what else they can do is today is the third of April. The decision came from the Court of Appeals on the 10th of March. They can appeal to the Supreme Court up to the ninth of April. Now, the Supreme Court does not take most of the petitions it receives. It gets to choose whether to do them or not. And so I don't know whether it would. And then, excuse me. How that appeal would go, of course, is another unknown. So far, every time this has been in front of a state board, the results have been unfavorable to the applicant in the county.
Well, I mean, I think your initial decision makes, I mean, it makes total logical sense that I think I think they get it wrong or it wasn't, yeah. But that's you know, I'm certainly concerned about the, the precedent that's said because everything has an environmental impact. If I walk across a field that has an environmental impact. So at what threshold do you start? You know, I mean, mine for sure, obviously, but then what's to the lesser degree, everything that we do affect something? So, yeah, well.
Yeah, we'll, we'll see what happens. Chris is correct, the applicant can appeal to the State Supreme Court, but that timeline is March, no, April 9. If, just like this case was being argued, some of the issue raised was that had the county repealed the ordinance before the court could have ruled, that will render the case mute. That was part of the argument. So if the council were to repeal this ordinance before the Court of Appeal, assuming the appeal, the same issue would be, well, the matter is now mute. You know, so I don't know what the applicant will do, but hopefully they will show up at your hearing and I don't know what they're going to do, but the concern you raised is a legitimate one. We'll see what comes into the future and we'll deal with that.
Yeah, I was making sure, Jack, you're, you're good for now. Great. And Jeremy, are you with us?
Yeah, I'm here. So to just kind of follow up on that point. So the applicant has until the ninth to appeal and we have our hearing on the 17th. So we should have all the information that we need to make a recommendation to the council on this, on that date.
That's correct. This is Oliver again. That's correct. As I made my remarks here, you have the staff report. You have the Court of Appeals decision. And then you have I don't think you will see the proposed ordinance that will go to the council repealing that section of the previous ordinance that affirmed their action. So you will be making a recommendation to council to repeal and they will be the one that will be considering your recommendation. But the, the ordinance will be in front of the council.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
You're welcome, sir.
Thanks, Jeremy. And then I have one question. You may have answered this already in a broad way of the, the effect of this lawsuit or this appeal. But what is the potential, potential effect on existing SMO properties?
Sorry, on other SMO properties?
Yes. Properties that currently have an SMO overlay.
No effect on them.
For the most part, those properties, when they come through the mining permit process or CUP process, will then probably be subject to an EIS at that point.
Absolutely. Yeah, it is, it is required by the conditional use permit and the site review permit criteria. If you read them, you find out that environmental analysis is required. So I, I don't know how many properties that have the overlay are, are looking at applying for permits right now, but.
Should they ever want to in the future? They, they know. The criteria that's set out in order to get that CUP.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, it's pretty exhaustive criteria in the case of a mine.
Sure. No, no further questions. Any other questions from you guys? Okay, well, thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll close that part of our workshop and move to the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. And Steve, are you taking it off from here?
Actually Harrison is, but I can introduce us. I'm Steve Gallup. I'm the Transportation Division Manager for Public Works. And then Harris, Harrison Huston, Community Planning, Transportation Planner. And so we're here to talk about the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. This is a program that could come nearer to you, hopefully, one of these days. But with that, we'll go ahead and I believe Harrison's got the first few slides and then I'll follow up.
All right, great. Thanks, Steve. Yeah, and just for the record, again, my name is Harrison Houston. I'm a transportation planner with Community Planning. Jeff, if you can go to the next slide, please. So for today's agenda, we plan on providing an introduction to the Neighborhood Traffic Management Program as well as the history and background of the project. Then go into some backgrounds of the traffic engineering team and the current tools that are being utilized to address customer service requests and areas of concerns throughout the county, as well as some of these tools limitations. And then we'll provide an overview of the, the process framework that is being proposed for a possible neighborhood traffic management program. We'll provide some examples of traffic management tools that can be utilized by this program. And then how the program would be supported and what is needed, what, what is needed for its implementation benefits that a program can provide to the community. And lastly, just review the next steps and timeline of this project after this work session with you all. Next slide, please. So throughout this presentation, we're going to be using the acronym NTMP in lieu of Neighborhood Traffic Management Program. And the NTMP is a project that county staff pursued at the direction of council as a response to traffic and road safety concerns that have been brought forward over the years by neighborhood associations and other county residents. Staff identified that there wasn't currently programming in place. And the project looked at developing a systematic approach that could be used to address these concerns. And so the main focus of this project or this program would really be for local neighborhood roads that you would find in residential areas. And I believe historically, local revenue from the county road funds has been prioritized to make improvements on higher classified roadways like arterials and collectors that handle higher volumes of vehicles. So at the onset of this, this project, staff develops a mission statement and goals to guide the work that went into, that went into developing program concepts, which was to provide traffic calming solutions where appropriate in order to influence driver behavior, improve neighborhood quality of life, create more safe livable, livable local streets. And in your meeting materials, we included a copy of the concepts report that was created by kind of the project, project team. And in there, there's a detailed outline of some of the goals and objectives that guided this project. The proposed program really aims to achieve that mission statement that I shared with you through a combination of tools that would focus on education, traffic enforcement and engineering solutions. And these tools are really tailored to help reduce speeding, cut through traffic and improve conditions for all road users. Next slide, please. So just to go into a little bit more about the history and background of the NTMP, the county has had some traffic calming programs in the past. However, I don't believe there's been an active program since the late 90s, early 2000s. And since then, the county has maintained existing speed bumps and other traffic calming devices and has had some installed through private development. But they, there hasn't really been an kind of an active effort to install them on a larger programmatic scale. And as I alluded to earlier, the, the county utilizes its local revenue to leverage state and federal grants to fund transportation projects. However, most of those grants are intended to really fund regionally significant roadways and local neighborhood roads are usually excluded from grant eligibility. So back in 2021, 2022, council approved this effort as part of Community Planning's Transportation Planning Work Program. And a consultant was brought, brought on board, helped staff develop three proposed conceptual programs. The project team reviewed similar traffic calming programs throughout the state and the Portland Vancouver metropolitan area and compiled a toolkit of interventions and road treatments that are proven to enhance traffic safety. And in 2023, the project team brought the three concept levels of implementation to council. And at that time, council requested that the project team do some further review of the program concepts and come back with with a clear recommendation with just, I guess, a recommendation for just one of those options. And so since then, the, the team revised the NTMP to provide that one recommendation for council to consider for adoption. And the concept that we will be bringing, I guess, to council in the future for consideration is the Level Two concept. And I think it's outlined in that concept report that was included. And if you're interested in looking at some of those other concepts that were developed, you can find them in Appendix A and B of that report. And if you kind of look at the differences between the, between all of them, they vary slightly based off of funding and their level of implementation as well. And I'm going to, we can go to the next slide and I'll pass it over to Steve, the next couple.
So Public Works receives hundreds of requests every year. Matter of fact, our traffic engineering team received about 400 calls last year. And then about seven to 80% of those were related to speeding. And then, you know, we tried to do our best to, to address those with the tools that we have and a course of resources, but it's this kind of limited. So therefore we're, we're trying to get this program up and running. Next slide, please. Some of the tools that we have now is sheriff enforcement. Of course, they're limited in their resources and what they can do for us, especially for traffic citations and for speeding issues and things. We do have these signs that are speed feedback radar signs. You can see one there on the right that basically when you go past it, it tells you how fast you're going. And those signs tend to seem to work for a little while until people understand, oh, I'm really not going to be getting a ticket here. It's, they realize that and then seem to go back to the, their old habits. So we do have about 80 of these types of signs that are on trailers that we do move throughout the, the county. We have found that to be an effective tool to be able to move them to different places and leave for a couple of weeks at a time. We also collect traffic counts. We do speed studies and collect traffic volumes and things. But what we can do with that information, we're, we're limited because of the, the lack of resources or, or tools that we can, we can do. So, next slide. And I believe Harrison, this is you.
Yes. Yeah, so as Steve mentioned in the, the previous slides, Public Works receives hundreds of service, hundreds of customer service requests a year. And we had heard that speeding and traffic safety is a, is a huge concern from our neighborhood associations. And I think the fact is that when drivers are faced with congestion on on some of our arterials and collectors, they choose to use neighborhood residential streets to avoid having to sit in traffic. And so the NTMP would provide a framework that outlines a consistent and transparent process for addressing these traffic complaints. It would also provide county staff with the tools and funding needed to systematically reduce speeding and improve safety in identified problem areas. And lastly, we believe that this systematic process would help enhance equity and livability across all of our neighborhoods. Next slide, please. So for this one, I'm kind of just going to provide now a quick high-level overview of the process framework that is outlined in the concept report. And that was, and kind of the process framework that was developed as as the Level Two concept that we'll be proposing to council. So as I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the, well, as we mentioned, the NTMP concepts were really developed to be this ongoing annual program. And it's kind of broken up into four separate steps. And the first step involves residents or neighborhood associations in the unincorporated Clark County submitting traffic concerns directly to Public Works. And I think as part of the meeting materials, we also provided you some kind of backgrounds, supporting materials for things that we would use kind of during these steps. And I think we included a mock website that kind of serves as an example of the webpage that you could see on the county website that residents would interact with. And that webpage would serve as a landing, basically a landing page for residents to submit their requests. It would provide additional information about the program and how it works. And so the process during the step one, the process to kind of elicit these submissions would be initiated every year on January 15th and remain open until March 1st. As part of that step one, county staff would do kind of an initial desktop assessment where they would collect data on the roadways and the existing conditions in the areas. And then they would use, or kind of some of the information that they would use would be stuff like traffic volume, zoning information, speed, crash history, and proximity to other things like bus stops that might generate pedestrian activity. And that initial assessment would help determine if a potential project would be eligible for this program. And kind of once we've determined, once we've collected all those requests and determined eligibility, we kind of move into that step two for the evaluation where staff would kind of, would compile a list of potential tools and strategies to address the concerns of each request. And Steve will later in the presentation review some of those tools, what they could look like. And once an initial list is compiled for these different projects, county staff would reach out to some internal and external stakeholders, including the Sheriff's Department, Fire District, C-Trans, and the school districts to kind of, yeah, to get feedback. And then projects would be scored and ranked using a prioritization methodology. And I think there is one outlines in page 35 of the concept report. It's a very long concept report, so that's why I'm kind of just referencing some page numbers. But yeah, you can find that on page 35. And those top scoring projects would move into step three under engagement. And during this step, during that step, county staff would host the eligible projects on the county website and notify those neighborhoods or residents whose projects would be moving forward with implementation. And that notification would happen around May 1st every year. And then in that last step, county staff would then take that prioritized list and present it to council for their approval in early summer. And after their approval, projects would be designed, scheduled, and added to the six-year transportation improvement program. And I think that's kind of the crossover with planning commission since the six-year tip is brought to you every year. We just thought we wanted to make you aware of this program that would be included into that in the future, if. So I'm going to pass it back over to Steve and Jeff, if you can go to the next slide.
So these next few slides, I'm going to run through just some examples of the tools that this program would be able to give us to use in neighborhoods. This first one is median islands. Median islands provide traffic calming and the fact that they provide kind of friction on both sides of the road. So naturally, when you have that kind of closed in, you kind of want to more slow down your speeds and things. So, next slide. This is a pedestrian island. So these help, of course, enhance the safety of pedestrian crossing in these crosswalks as well as provide a little more kind of things in the road that require people to kind of process a little bit more and kind of slow down and think what's happening here, especially pedestrian crossing like this. Next slide. Of course, we'll have the speed humps and bumps in the program. This definitely will help slow down speeds. They have to be designed properly and spaced properly and everything. So this program will help us to be able to, be able to use speed bumps like this. And we typically design those for 20 to 25 miles per hour on local roadways. Next slide. This is what we call optical speed bars. And we actually have this out on northeast 88th Street. We're trying them out over there. This is kind of a cut-through road over to Costco and Home Depot area and things. And so what they are is these little kind of tick marks that we put in the lane. They are, they get spaced closer and closer as you go through these tick marks to give you an illusion like you're going faster. And so people want to tend to slow down. And actually, we kind of did a before and after study on these things. And it actually showed that generally, the average speed slowed down by five miles per hour, which is actually quite a bit. So that's a lot. And so they're quite effective. So this would be another tool that we would be able to use in this program. Next slide. Of course, we've probably seen these at crosswalks. They're flashing beacons, not that great of a picture, but you can see the pedestrian sign over there. It has this bar, this beacon bar that flashes when, of course, people are going to be using the crosswalk to help let people know that, you know, our drivers know that people are crossing. And those actually are very effective of getting drivers to yield to pedestrians in crosswalks. These, these tools have actually showed 20%, or excuse me, 70% increase in driver compliance, people actually stopping for pedestrians in crosswalks. So they're, they're good too. And they're, they're called RFBs, Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacons. So, next slide. And then, of course, we'll have educational campaigns. This is an education campaign that we did as far as, we actually do this every year in Public Works. It's bringing awareness about workers in work zone and slow down. And we see the signs, cones, and flaggers. You should be slowing down and paying attention to them that are working. Everybody wants to get home to their families by the end of the day. So, next slide. So how the NTMP will support our team and section is that it will add two additional full-time employees. It will also help us to increase the capacity in our team to kind of be more proactive versus being reactive and responding. So it'll give us those tools to be able to be more proactive and kind of catch the problem before, before it happens. Of course, it'll improve collaboration with neighborhood associations, other departments and things, especially as we go out and kind of let people know about this program and how they can apply our website and stuff. So it'll also help with reducing repeat, repeat calls. A lot of times, we try to go out there, do the best we can when we get the call. And there's usually time that kind of lapses. And so then we get a phone call back saying, you know, what's, what's going on, the thing? So with additional resources, hopefully that'll help us to reduce those, those types of calls. Next slide. The benefits to the community, of course, it's safer streets for everybody, pedestrians, cyclists, drivers, scooters, skateboarders, you name it. Safer for all of them. That's kind of our goal, is to make a place for everybody that they'll have a safe spot to be able to use, use those, our local roads. It could increase property values, make our neighborhood more sustainable, more satisfaction, more, you know, make people hopefully happier and that are in those neighborhoods using, using the roads and things. And it's more of a, this is going to be more of an equitable process and transparent. It'll allow us to have a program that we can apply throughout the whole county versus just trying to concentrate on different phone calls here and there that we get. So it's kind of a more of an equitable type process that we can provide throughout the whole county. Next slide, please. So we did present this to council in a work session earlier this month. And then also earlier, or excuse me, early in March. And in the middle of March, we actually did already present this program to the Four Creeks Neighborhood Association, which they were fully supportive as well as council was fully supportive of this program. They're excited to have it and have that opportunity to be able to do this. Of course, we're presenting this to you guys tonight, the Plan Commission. Next week, we're going to go to DEB. And then I think the following week after that, we're going to go to the Neighborhood Association Council of Clark County and present this program to them. So like I say, with council, we, we are going to go back to them, hopefully in May. And we'll have a public hearing and get their approval for the program. And to be able to, we'll get it into our budget for 2026. And we'll be able to start it and hopefully in 2026 is what we're shooting for. And then, of course, we'll have an annual reporting process to this. As Harrison mentioned, it's, it also, some of the bigger projects that come out of this will get into our six-year tip and then we'll have to program those that way. And I think, next slide, I think that's it. And so we're, we're, I want to take some questions, you know, and comments. And this feedback that we're going to hopefully get from you guys tonight and questions and things, we'll actually report back to council when we go back to them to get final approval. So with that, leave it with you guys.
Thanks, Steve. Thanks, Harrison. Okay, we'll go down to this and ask some questions. So we'll start with Mark online.
Well, thank you both of you for your presentation. That was really good. And having several son-in-laws in law enforcement, hopefully that resident form to report things and request review will come in handy. And especially around the new Costco over in Ridgefield. That's a mess right now, so if you've been over there. Anyway, I just wanted to thank you. I'm excited. I didn't realize that you guys were doing this. So hopefully we'll be able to see the, the positive impacts of this within a year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Mark. Kyle, you're up.
I want to thank you guys for giving this presentation as well as someone who lives on a surface street that's used to cut through. It is definitely appreciated by me and others that, that may live in a situation like that where people are speeding through all the time. One question I did have, and it may be in the report, what the associated costs are of this, this program? If that's in the report, I can take a look.
Where, where, what we're looking at is, like I say, we're going to get two full-time employees. And the budget that we're looking at is $500,000. So half of that $500,000, $500,000 every year. So half of that $500,000 will be for the two, support the two employees. And then the other half will be to help implement some of these tools. So we'll have approximately a quarter of a million dollars to be able to, to do some of those things that I was talking about.
Thank you. That's the only question I had.
Thanks, Kyle. And Eldon.
No, I thought the presentation was great. So really what we're, we're doing here, this is just all background information for the planning commission. Because hopefully sometime in the future, we'll see a tip report saying, here's some information that the NTMP has come up for some transportation projects. Basically, what you're hoping for.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Like I said, I'm hoping that a lot of those, those types of tools, we could probably do, you know, kind of more on a, on a quicker basis with the funds that we have. But there are going to be some projects that are going to be probably come out of this program. They're going to be a little bigger than what this kind of program can handle. So those will end up getting in the tip.
So hopefully a couple of years from now, we'll see a line item on the tip. And we'll go, aha, we were given some background information on that.
That's the plan. Yeah.
All right. Okay, Jack.
So how many current employees are doing the, the, the current program? Or is there no employees?
Right now, like I was saying, we have, we have a traffic engineering team and that team consists of, oh, about five or six employees. And they, but they have a lot of other responsibilities and duties. And following up on service requests is probably, I don't know, 25% of their, kind of what they do on that team. So.
It's kind of a hodgepodge of who's available to call Ms. Betty back.
Yeah, right. Pretty much. And so what this program would do is actually at least dedicate two employees full-time to just doing this, which would be really good.
And then what is the technology component? I guess, like, I think my first thought was like, they're just taking physical phone calls? Is that, is that, or is there an online, do you guys have an online system for reporting stuff?
And, yeah, Harrison, you want to talk about that maybe?
Are you talking about the reporter road concern right now? Or?
Do you receive the information right now? Is it just phone call or is it online? Is it email? Is there?
Oh, I can actually answer that. The way that we do it right now is through, we do have a service request database that people can call in. We have, we have a phone number that people call in. And then that gets entered into this database. And then that gets, that goes out to the teams that needs to follow up on it.
Would it make sense for you guys to have some kind of web-based portal where all that information is just put into and the request put into online and it automatically just populates, it shows heat maps, it shows the data, it shows?
That'd be great. Yes.
I'm sure there's canned programs like that out there because it's, it wouldn't surprise me if the city of Vancouver has something like that because they have a really simple online reporting. It just, it doesn't make, your guys' time is so valuable and the interaction that if there's taking phone calls and responding to phone calls versus having all of that kind of automated and then just, and you're not having to like then repeat everything and re-input everything. It would, from my standpoint, I would, I would love to make a recommendation to say, hey, let's look at the technology component because I think it's going to really free up the stuff that you really want to.
Definitely. Like, like Harrison was saying earlier, basically, you know, for the most part, we're going to have an online, of course, people can go online, they'll fill out application, we'll go to neighborhood associations. But you're right, it would be nice to be able to have kind of a more of a system that could kind of take the information that we do and kind of show more of a reporting type thing. And, and like you were saying, heat maps and stuff, that'd be cool.
Yeah, I mean, it just makes, to me, it just makes a lot of, a lot of sense. And I think you get, because I noticed the seventy to eighty percent versus if it was checked off of a list of thing, you'd be like, we'd have seventy-three percent of our calls are X, you know, and so anyways, food, food for thought there, but I would be very much in supportive of a good can, I'm sure there's a can program out there that sells to counties.
Thank you.
Hey, Jack, Jeff pulled up their mock website and shows a form on their mock website. I think it's a mock website, right?
Yeah, yep.
Yeah, this is kind of that, yeah, mock website that we shared. And it does look like on here, there's some embedded portion for kind of a digital request form as well. I know we, we shared a kind of a physical copy of what the form would look like, but it does look like what is provided, that there would be a, a digital version as well.
If you could hold that website up when I, I have a question about one of the forms on there too. But I didn't want to skip over Jeremy.
Okay. Hey, thank, thank you, Brian. This, this is Jeremy Baker. So I had, I had a few questions and kind of piggybacking off of what Jack was talking about. So so one, one question that I had was you had like, say, we had four hundred calls last year. How much time is, does it take to evaluate each, each problem area? And like, so if you had four hundred, like for example, last year you had four hundred phone calls, how many different areas was that? That was brought to your attention? And then how long does each issue get, take to get evaluated?
Those were, we actually, I think, had a map, but it, those are calls all throughout the county. So I mean, granted, probably some are areas that have higher traffic areas, more pedestrians. You know, maybe by schools and things, we'll probably get more of the, the phone calls and stuff in those areas. Yeah, like right there, that's kind of an example of, you know, you can kind of see the cluster is more kind of down by their urban, urban area. You kind of see that versus out more in the rural areas. But.
Right. Okay, to follow up on, to follow up on that. So how, how do you, is there a categorization of like priorities? So if, if, if an area gets evaluated and it's deemed response is appropriate, how, what is the, the mechanism that we are going to use to, the county is going to use to categorize each issue to, to allow like what, what, what's, what's higher priority, what, what's, what's less, less priority? Because obviously there's, there's going to be a resource issue with, with, oh, we can only do so much.
Yeah. Right now, our priority is basically a first come, first served type basis is what we do. But this program will have a whole different priority type system. There'll be like points assigned, just depends on if it's next to a school, it has sidewalks, the speeds, what the speed's going to be and stuff. So this has a priority type system. And I think that's that worksheet right there, matter of fact, that Harrison brought up.
Okay, great. And then I think also with what Jack was talking about with the web-based portal or whatnot, it would, I think the public would probably be, they probably appreciate having a list of potent, like areas that are get, are in, like where they are in the process, if they're getting evaluated or awaiting funding or in progress, or is it, is that something that's going to be part of this NTMP?
Yeah, I think we'll have to have something like that. It's, it'd like say, we're going to take some of these comments and try to make our make it better or, or to try to make it, you know, how it's going to work most effectively. So I appreciate that. That's, that's definitely a good comment. Thank you. Good question.
Yep. Thank you. I think, I think that's, that's essentially, I think you've answered all the questions that I have at the moment.
Thanks, Jeremy. And Steve, I got a couple of questions to your comments. Really, I echo what the rest of the planning commissioners have said in terms of the presentation. Great job. The, there was a staff evaluation form I saw in, on the mock website. And I don't know if Jeff could call that up, but just had a question on one of the criteria on that evaluation form.
Okay.
And I think it, it seemed like that evaluation form then got you to the place of prioritizing projects.
Yeah.
And I zoom in on that, Jeff, a little bit. It was a question that said whether or not a project would fit into this program or not. And one of them was residential property on the street would not be, would not fit into the program.
Yeah. So actually go on, go to the next sheet. Was there?
Okay, that's it, right there. The first question.
The very first question is the, is the roadway classified as a local roadway?
No, our next one, does the roadway have residential frontage?
So what the deal is, the first question is, is the roadway classified as a local roadway? So the court, you know, is it yes or no? If it's not a local roadway, then it puts you down into the arterial collector box there. And so you go to question number two and it, what's question number two? Does the roadway have residential frontage? I can read it better down here. It's so, so that's the whole point of this program is to where the residents are. So if it's an arterial collector, it doesn't have resident, residential frontage, then we're, this program, it's not going to qualify for this program. So.
Yeah, just reading through the eligibility checklist there. I'd like the, the methodology that it helped. Anybody could really grab that form and, and determine the priority of a project or eligibility of a project. That was a really great form.
And, and I know Harrison, when he first started off, he said, this is a program that's going to help us to be able to do something on local roads, which it is. Most part, this is going to be a program for traffic calming in, in residential roads, which we don't have a lot of funds to spend. But also for lower volume arterial collector roads that have residential along them, this program will also be able to help for that too. So.
Um, the, a question, this is kind of a silly one maybe, but what's the difference between bumps and humps? I saw the sign that said bumps and.
Just basically a sign.
So it has nothing to do with what part of the country we're in or the size of the bump or?
We, we used to, to, at, at one time, we did have signs that said humps. But we found that those got stolen a lot. We decided to keep the above sides. I'm serious. That's, that's the reason why. So, so we, we actually like to call them in the technical engineering realm, we like to call them humps because they're more shaped like a hump, not a bump. You know, when we think of a bump, it's something more like you see in a parking lot that's more abrupt. That's not this case, but the signage, we still call them bumps.
Okay, thanks. And then one last comment is on your community engagement or community outreach. And I saw the picture showed a young kid on a piece of equipment. And, and one community event that I'm aware of that has a lot of equipment and a lot of young kids is Dozer Days. Didn't know if you'd be connected with that in any way or an area to reach out.
Yeah, we, we will. Matter of fact, I think we actually, I think we did that last year. I think Public Works did that last year down the ops, operations shop and stuff. And so we do those every once, every, not every year, but every once in a while.
That's great. Yeah. Yeah. I love the face of kids on equipment.
Yeah, be able to use, go on equipment. Yep.
It's a good time to grab them and talk. Okay, I have no further questions. If any other questions come up. Okay, great. Again, thanks, Steve and Harrison. Excellent. With that, I'll turn it over to Oliver for any final comments.
Yes. The update from me is that the climate work, the, the CAG was scheduled to complete their last meeting, March twenty-sixth. However, because of the inclement, not inclement, but the warning of the potential storm and other, the meeting was canceled. So it is now scheduled for April seventh. Hopefully that will be their last meeting. And following that, we will begin putting their recommendation in, on paper. And hopefully we'll start coming to the planning commission for your work session and, and have been giving you the opportunity to start reviewing the work of their group. So stay tuned, we'll be coming to you as quickly as we have the drafts out.
On that, so this is Eldon, just to follow up on the CAG. They're, they're meeting on five-thirty on Monday. I would encourage the planning commission members, if you have time, to listen in. Because the climate changes to the comp plan are very extensive. There's at least thirty-three goals and a hundred and fifty-seven policies related to that. And so more background information that we can get from is only going to help when, when the time comes for us to discuss it. I also mentioned Jenna, I think you were copying on it too. I requested that some of the stuff start getting reviewed by the planning commission as soon as possible because there were some that were like low hanging fruit. And Jenna kind of pretty much politely pushed back on that. So I'd, I'd still like to see if there's some way that we can get some of that up. And she said we'd still have months to, to review it. However, we know how time flies by. So.
Thank you, planning commissioner Eldon. You're correct, but as you know, sometimes things you think are low hanging fruits. When you're in a committee, they come back to we don't want to talk about it. So we want to give them the opportunity to have this, their final meeting, make comments on any other issues or what they have seen before. So it is part of the process. I share your concern, but I want to give them that opportunity to finish and raise any concerns that they may have. And I agreed broadly speaking that this is their recommendation to the public, the public meaning you two and our council and the public. So bear with us. And I appreciate your recommendation that the planning commission tune in. The meeting is hybrid, so you don't have to come down here. You can watch that online and participate. The group have done a tremendous work. They may whittle it down, it may no longer be a hundred and fifty policies, it may be a hundred, who knows? But I want to give them that opportunity to.
The best account that they gave last time. So.
Yes, yes, you're right.
I was like, what?
Yes. So I'm looking forward to, to the meeting. And of course, you all know that I believe it's up in, was it in King County, Chris, that a judge ruled that the I twenty-sixty-six is unconstitutional. So we don't know what that would mean, but I think that ruling applied statewide, if you will. It's likely that it's going to be appealed, but these are some of the things that also now said, okay, what do we do? How do we write a policy on electrification or opportunity for gas and so forth. So there's so many other things we have to take into consideration. Again, I don't know what will happen, knowing that the case will likely be appealed. We'll, we'll see what happens. But you will, we'll be coming to you as quickly as we can.
And, and that's an appeal that goes right to the Supreme Court because it's an appeal of an initiative. And the Supreme Court doesn't get to say, oh, we don't want to hear this.
Is that the, the gas?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
The, don't dis-gas is the way I kind of think of it.
Yes. Yeah, that's.
Twenty-sixty-six.
Yeah, it's I twenty-sixty-six. That's all I have. Thank you. I already mentioned the hearing that the council will have on April eighth. Thank you.
Well, maybe council should go back to the climate initiative like they did to the NTMP and say, just give us one initiative and we'll vote on that. All one recommendation. Okay, what, any other comments? Hearing none. Let's see. Thank you, Larissa and Jeff for dinner tonight. It was great. Larissa must have had to leave early. And with nothing else on the agenda, I'll adjourn tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you.